Great Port of Los Angeles, I know it's a very special spot and what a dramatic view today with the clouds and the sky and the colors. Very special to be here in San Pedro. I'm joined by the great Councilman of the 15th District, Joe Buscaino. My name is Tom Labange and raise your hand if you ever took the ferry boat across there. We've got a few of us here. Only about five or six of us left, we're in trouble Gene, but we're okay. Good afternoon and before I start the meeting, yesterday was Veterans Day. I'd like to ask all veterans of the military service of the United States, please rise right now, all veterans. Give them a big hand, thank you very much. All right, let's call item one to the, Mr. Clerk.
Item number one is a verbal report from the Harbor Department relative to the Los Angeles 2020 Commission recommendations in regards to the Port of Los Angeles.
Mr. Soroka, could you give us a report, please?
Chairman, Councilman, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I appreciate you all taking the time to convene this very important Trade Commerce and Tourism Commission Special Meeting here in San Pedro. It allows you to take a look at the activity at our port complex. And to start this afternoon, I'd like to share with you some updated information on those port activities. We have it on the advice of some of the organized labor groups that there will be picketing at our port tomorrow, beginning very early in the morning. Folks who are trying to organize, truck drivers from the Teamsters Unit will be out here in Southern California to start their peaceful demonstration tomorrow, beginning at about 6:00 AM, organizing around certain truck companies' yards in the Los Angeles area, specifically Dominguez Hills, Compton, and Carson. They will then follow the dispatch trucks down here to the harbor area. Tomorrow is going to be a very important day. As you know, we've had record container numbers coming through our port. We have high levels of congestion. The supply chain is in peril, especially with the onlooking events of the holiday season coming before us. The work that we need to do to keep this program open and the port running smoothly is of paramount importance to all of us associated here at the Harbor Department. We will keep you and others updated as appropriate, but tomorrow's going to be a pretty tough day.
Question, you check with LAPD Labor Relations?
We've worked with everybody, under the direction of Port Police Chief Ron Boyd and the Unified Command. We've already had meetings, discussions, and we've updated our customers live and in person here this afternoon at 2:00.
And to follow the proper protocols.
Protocol, communication tree, contact numbers, 24/7 operation, yes.
Thank you.
The complications are further than simple demonstration under the rights of the First Amendment. We continue to work without a longshore contract between the employers and the ILW master contract agreements. Complications being as such, if pickets go up, there is a chance that longshore activity does not take place tomorrow. So we're working quite diligently in our efforts to help and assist the ongoing bargaining in San Francisco with both the Pacific Maritime Association and the ILW International Leadership. They are fully apprised as of about 20 minutes ago with everything that I'm sharing with you here this afternoon. To begin as requested, we'll talk just a moment about the Los Angeles 2020 Report in our comments. The question was posed to us around the cooperation today and in the future between the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach. The ports of LA and Long Beach have a history of cooperating on issues of mutual importance. As ports, we have undertaken joint environmental initiatives, including the Clean Air Action Plan and the Clean Truck Program. We've cooperated on security measures and joint response plans at the port complex. In addition, currently through the authority of a discussion agreement filed with the Federal Maritime Commission, Agreement Number 201219, we jointly address supply chain issues such as chassis availability, trucking, and operational efficiencies. In so much as we recently held a meeting with the three large chassis leasing companies, Flexi Van, Trac, and DCLI, in an effort to mobilize a program of a gray chassis pool in Southern California. This is of importance because it was the first time those three companies met in the same room at the same time, and we, along with Long Beach, helped facilitate that meeting. Further, after four hours of discussion and deliberation and a lot of debate, we got the chassis leasing companies to agree to formulate the first phase of a gray chassis pool here in Southern California, beginning February 1st, 2015. That pool will be managed by a third-party service provider and wrapped with an information technology system to manage inventory, out-of-service equipment, and promoting an air of transparency that we have not had on this issue in its history of operation. It is a significant step forward, but only a step. There are many other issues within the supply chain that will need to be addressed and managed as we move forward. Back to 2020. Any proposal to merge the two ports, such as through a joint powers agreement or otherwise, will require more discussion and participation from a variety of stakeholders. This would include representatives at the local level and involvement by various state and federal authorities as well. Part of the, part of the work that was done in the 2020 Report also drew those conclusions. There's, there are levels of complexity to bringing this together. Want to ensure that the committee understands those complexity areas. As a path going forward, we will continue to work with the Port of Long Beach and other industry partner stakeholders to develop strategies and solutions that address items that can be of shared concern. And again, these are the areas that we talked about, safety, security, social responsibility, infrastructure, just to name a few. It's also important to note that the ports remain very focused on their market share and staying competitive. Over the last decade, the two-port share of the nation's trade grew by a little less than 2% when measured in tonnage. Measured in dollars, we appear to have lost share to Houston specifically, but this is because Houston's major import, oil, went from $30 a barrel in 2003 to $100 per barrel in 2012. So that's kind of skews the statistics just a bit. Our primary business, as both of you gentlemen know, is containerized trade, and we continue to handle over 40% of the nation's containerized imports and over 52% of imports from Asia through our port complex here in San Pedro Bay between Los Angeles and Long Beach. Between 2003 and 2013, our combined container volumes grew by 2.8 million TEUs. We are committed to growing our volume and being a primary trade gateway to the Pacific Rim. As we look at our book of business today, we can segment our cargo into thirds. About a third of the cargo that arrives here in Los Angeles and Long Beach is either for local consumption or locally designed exportation in the five-county Southern California area. The second-third of our business comes here because of the great infrastructure that has been built up over decades. We have more than 100 trains departing and arriving into the LA basin every day. More than 1.8 billion square feet of warehousing and cold storage within near proximity to the docks. World-class transloading facilities here in Southern California extending out to the island empire, which allows for the transportation of much of our nation's retail goods to the store shelves. So that piece has been solidified because of the good work that we do in those ancillary areas that are of importance to the logisticians moving the cargo. The third piece, in my view, is discretionary cargo, meaning that those container ships can go to any port they wish and still meet the requirements of their customers to final destination or pickup at points of origin. This is the cargo that, along with the other two segments, we work day and night to maintain and also to be assertive in the need of growing our nation's number-one port. So it becomes a little more complex as you go down through the layers, but there is not cargo that comes here just because it is Southern California. We must earn it every day. At this point, I'd be happy to take questions on this topic.
First, let me thank Mr. Chairman for allowing us to hold TCT Special Meeting here in the harbor area. It's great to see so many of my constituents here to be engaged in their government. Mr. Soroka, thank you for hosting us as well.
Thank you, Joe. They're sending me out to sea in about seven months, but I'd like to come down here if it's okay, with the port maybe two or three more times before my term's up.
Yes, absolutely. You're welcome anytime, Councilman.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. And Gene, thanks for having us. Thanks for hosting us, you and your team here at the port building. You know, I see a number of my neighbors who've been advocates for and helping, championing the reduction of emissions between both ports, specifically through the Clean Air Action Plan, which is a prime example that, a major accomplishment between both ports. Can you explain to us, the Clean Air Action Plan, when was it adopted and the ongoing efforts in looking at a Clean Air Action Plan 2.0 moving forward? Because as you know, I sit on the Board of the AQMD, the Air Quality Management District, and my colleagues from the Board and friends in the environmental community have strongly pushed for a need for a 2.0 plan to continue to reduce emissions in our ports. So update or give us a brief history on the Clean Air Action Plan and second, have the ports initiated conversations about a cap update?
Yeah, absolutely. Clean Air Action Plan is now celebrating its 10-year anniversary, and it is time that we raise the bar once again. We have plans in place, and I was asked by our Board of Harbor Commissioners at our most recent meeting this past Friday to bring forward our environmental blueprint going down line. That would be presented at the December 18th meeting specifically. There are a number of items that need to be renewed and have renewed energy behind, and we are, as the Harbor Department, committed to just that. And there'll be a number of new looks, shapes, and sizes as to what we do, all to be determined. We have some pretty important meetings coming up in Asia, specifically with our customers, that we just had the briefing on here this afternoon with Councilmember Buscaino. We were recently, along with Vice President of our Board of Harbor Commissioners, Dave Arian in Europe, talking to the top three shipping lines in the world, who are also part of what we do here at the Port of Los Angeles. We need stakeholder communities to come along with us as well, and that's going to be a very important part of the dialogue. But as I can say, the willingness is there and the intent from our department is as strong as ever.
Thank you for that. And I know in moving forward, we've been saying, even in the initial stages of Mayor Hahn, we're going to grow this port but make sure we grow it green. Can you explain to us some collaborative efforts between both the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach on looking forward and looking towards more green technologies in the near future?
Yeah, technology is something so great right now that we're having a challenge keeping up with it. Interestingly enough, when we talk about port infrastructure, we're working on a 20-year horizon of appropriating funds, building and anticipating what trade will look like down line. Technology is advancing so quickly that that comes compartmentalized within those 20 years over a number of segments, but we are making inroads in a number of areas. One of the great activities that the port produced was the Clean Truck Program, dating back several years. We've raised the bar on that consecutively as we've moved forward in having cleaner and more useful trucks on the roads. We've also moved traffic away from the streets during high congestion times, as well as when the children are going to schools in the mornings and the afternoons. Great credit to those who came before us, but there is still more work to do in this area. Solar technology, liquefied propane gas, liquefied natural gas are all alternative fuels and alternative energy sources that we're exploring, and we have beta testing in place today. Zero and near-zero emissions yard equipment for our terminal customers is also in the testing phase today as well. There are some work, there is some work around the cost, operational, and financial efficiency models in place, but we're continuing to move the ball forward in all of these areas. And we'll have more to report in upcoming TCT meetings.
And the importance in response to that 2020 Report, to ensure that the Port of Long Beach is at the forefront and at the table as well, because if you look at the Clean Air Action Plan, I was told by my Chief of Staff long ago, you know, all, all hands on deck on both sides, of both sides of Ports of Long Beach and in Long, in Los Angeles when they created a, a, you just had, you had business, labor, electeds, the environmental community together, task force to move forward. Can you get back to this committee in 90 days on an update on the Clean Air Action Plan moving forward on the 2.0?
Yeah, I think 90 days would be appropriate, Councilman. There are a number of folks that we have to bring into this program to advance it, including our Mayor of Los Angeles, Eric Garcetti, as well as Mayor in Long Beach. So there's some work that we're going to be doing on this upcoming trip in order to solicit advice and try to create this plan, so I think 90 days is appropriate.
Fantastic. You, on the congestion side, you indicated, gave us a brief on the chassis issue, appreciate that. Infrastructure projects and how both ports can work collectively. Last May, the City of Los Angeles approved the SKIG, the Southern California International Gateway Project, which ultimately, once built, it will remove thousands upon thousands of truck trips off our regional freeways. Is there any other efforts between both ports to move cargo more efficiently, effectively?
Absolutely, and that, under the guidance of Commissioner Arian, is what we are discussing today with the Port of Long Beach. As I mentioned in our FMC Agreement 201219, it allows us to talk about the supply chain issues, operational efficiencies, because this port complex represents 40% of all imports that come into our country. It is necessary for us to move in lockstep down line. The new General Manager at the Port of Long Beach, John Slangerup, get along famously, and we are working in a very constructive manner to help.
I think you have more experience, though.
Thank you, and I appreciate your ongoing support, Councilman. The work that we want to do in this area is of real importance to everybody who lives and works around this community and communities that are even farther reaching. Equally as important it is to mention, as we said at the top, that our two ports have a history of working very closely together on these projects, and we're going to elevate that now.
And it seems like, in response to the 2020 Report, that we're competing more with Long Beach than anyone else around this country, and what efforts are in place specifically with the shipping alliances and how this, the shipping alliances will impact competition at both ports?
Now, this is, this is something that's a work in progress, as we see today. There are approximately 20 major carriers that do business in the trans-Pacific trade. They have formed four major alliances. The direction of cargo under those four alliances could make or break the operation of a port. That's why we're trying to stay very close to the shipping lines, our terminal customers, as well as other stakeholders within the supply chain, to drive cargo here to grow it efficiently in a green manner, but also to have that forward-looking plan so we can anticipate the changes in the market. We understand that coming very soon will be the next generation of vessels. As you're aware, we have a 13,000 TEU vessel calling it our terminal operation at APMT. The vessel sizes will continue to get larger. Many of our shipping line customers have 14,000 TEU vessels ready to come into the waterborne deployment architecture within the trans-Pacific trade. I would say at least within the next 12 to 15 months.
Appreciate that. You know, Mr. Labange, if you look at the relationship we've had with the Port of Long Beach in helping to collectively reduce emissions through the Clean Air Action Plan, I'd like to work, move forward and work with Mayor Garcetti and Mayor Robert Garcia on the Long Beach side to create a similar task force on, on talking about the competition, because it seems like we're competing more. Commissioner Ed Renwick has mentioned the race to the bottom in that report that he put out. So I think, not a working, working group just yet, I think we need to fold in Mayor Garcetti's team and of course Mayor Garcia's team as well, moving forward, but I think that's a sign of things to come.
Well, I think it is, and I think I'd like to have Long Beach here at the same table sometime next year, just to discuss this and we move forward. Joe, where are you at 6:00, excuse me, Councilman, where are you at 6:00 AM every day?
I'm coming back from a workout, at Hayday, down here.
Hey, Dave, well, I'm coming out from a hike in Griffith Park. In the last three, four years, the absolute view from Griffith Park, which is straight up Vermont Avenue, Vermont's a little west of us here, is much cleaner because of what the ports have done collectively. That's anecdotal, but it's the truth. I remember one of his very, very dark skies. So continuing that effort, I do believe Long Beach has a great port. They call it the Port of Long Beach. San Pedro has a great port, the Port of Los Angeles. Long Beach has a nice freeway, the Long Beach Freeway. I want to change the name of the Harbor Freeway to the San Pedro Freeway, because that's where it ends, but that's all I want to say.
Nice.
One time there. But we'll look forward to the report and thank you. Continue on the job, on the good days that there are, and I hope tomorrow's a good day and people could come to the table and do the right thing, whatever the right thing is.
Thank you. And one last comment, if I may, Chairman. The FMC Agreement under which we work today allows us to talk about just about everything within the supply chain, infrastructure, sustainability areas. What it does not allow us to do is talk about terms and price with customers for the record.
And we have a great captain steering the ship.
Thank you.
Here at the port, under your leadership and direction, we appreciate that.
Captain takes a great team, we've got a great team behind you too there, so. Thank you Cynthia Ruiz for all the community work, which I know, and my only goal down here, I know I love you, Joe, but I love Janice Hahn more. Make the Congresswoman happy and I'm happy, so that's it.
Yes, and we stay in very close contact and seek her advice on a regular basis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No cards on this item, thank you for that verbal report. I do have one card right now, and I do have a one-minute public comment. Is Kathryn Gray here? Would you like to come up? I'm going to, we only have one card for public comment, so let's get it out of the way. Mr. Bach, thank you so much. Thank you, Kathryn.
Good evening, Councilman. Thank you so much for coming to San Pedro this afternoon. I'm Kathryn Gray with the San Pedro Convention Visitors Bureau, and I understand that we had requested through the Neighborhood Council, and I'm here for the Convention Visitors Bureau, that we get our free holiday parking back, and I understand that it's not going to be brought to the floor. I respectfully ask that you reconsider, a good segue from what was just spoken about, we have all these Christmas items coming in, and most businesses depend on, most of their businesses at Christmas time. And a lot of these businesses are struggling all through the year, and to have any hindrance for them, for people to come downtown San Pedro is a hindrance, and it does affect their business. I think it might be penny wise and pounds foolish, because if more business is brought in, then you'll have more sales tax. So I respectfully request if you would please reconsider.
Thank you. I'm going to respectfully request the Councilman of the 15th District to handle that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is going to be item number two, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, item, yes. Item number two is consideration of a motion by Councilwoman Buscaino relative to the conclusions and recommendations of the Port Sacal redevelopment financial feasibility study.
And I have a number of cards which I'll call later on. I want Mr. Buscaino to open up this here, but I'm pleased, in the city, and I have the great opportunity to serve the city almost 40 years, there's great people that you work with over the years, and I don't know of anybody better than Wayne Rakovich, who I know is with you on this project in some way, which is so key to us and the work that he's done. Mr. Rakovich, but I, next time you come to committee, I'll own you a tie, you've got to have a tie on there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I can open up this item. The feasibility study came out on Monday, and thank the port for, for sharing that and getting this out. And let me make it clear, I'm not looking for a scaled-down project. My vision is for a Port Sacal redevelopment project to be an opportunity to pursue an important first step in transformation of our LA waterfront. If you look at some, some key initiatives that have taken place in the last several months, a billion dollars that has been earmarked to green the LA River and create public access for recreation and generate opportunities for commercial residential development adjacent to the water's edge. Last week, the mayor announced a goal to create 100,000 new housing units in Los Angeles by 2021. Metro is eyeing another transportation measure for the ballot in 2016 that would raise a sales tax and generate tens of billions of dollars to expand the county's rail network. We're saying, why not here? LA's second major league soccer franchise was disbanded and a new ownership, you may have heard, with a group that was formed with Magic Johnson, Mia Hamm, Nomar Garciapara, Tony Robbins, Peter Guber, was announced just a few weeks ago, and we're saying, this new ownership group is now actively seeking a 15- to 100-acre site to invest over $100 million and build a new 20,000-seat soccer and entertainment stadium. We're saying, why not here? I'm bullish on the harbor area and San Pedro, and I believe that we are positioned to transform our waterfront and generate excitement and investment that will forever change the perceptions of the waterline up and down the state of California throughout this country and create opportunities for my son and daughter and hopefully their kids' kids as well. So I'm eager to hear about the feasibility study that was done by the port, to learn more about what it, what is possible, not what isn't possible along our waterfront. And Mr. Chair, if I can, I'm going to ask Mr. Soroka, because you have some business to tend to, in light of what may take place tomorrow, to give some opening comments first. I'll turn it over, if you're okay, Mr. Chair, to public comment, and then we'll get to Mr. Galvin for...
What I'd like, I'd like to have the general director, the director of the port, open up, then, then get the staff presentation, and then have public comment so we can make sure everything's on the table, please.
Thanks, Gene.
Chairman, Councilman, thank you again. Councilman Buscaino, over the past four and a half months that we've been working together, you have made an indelible impression on me as to how important this project is. And with my research and meetings, I have found that for the past three decades, it's been very important to many members of our community. This is of the highest priority to the Harbor Department and the non-cargo-related areas. This is of the highest priority to the Harbor Department and non-cargo-related areas. I understand your vision. We've worked very closely with your staff. I've personally met with Mr. Rakovich, as well as the Johnson Brothers, to understand their vision. I've worked very closely with Dave Mathews and Mike Galvin and staff in order to move this ball forward. As I've mentioned to you in our other meetings, on December 11th, I will make a recommendation to our Board of Harbor Commissioners on a dollar value by which we can commit to this project and others along the LA waterfront from an infrastructure investment perspective. So we are setting timelines and bringing commitments forward in the not-too-distant future. Mike will now talk, Mike Galvin will now talk about the presentation that you have in front of you, the description of the financial feasibility study, our plans forward, and some of the broken-down details within the feasibility study to talk about what is possible. And with your permission, I'd like to excuse myself to attend to the business of tomorrow's activities. Thank you both very much.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Councilmember. Mike Galvin, Director of Special Projects with the Port. I'm the Port Employee Responsible for the negotiations with the LA Waterfront Alliance for the redevelopment of Port Sacal. I'm going to go through a brief overview of the feasibility study, and, and hopefully there's questions as well, and I can answer any questions that there may be regarding the feasibility study. Feasibility study is pretty long, it's about 250 pages, so I'll keep it brief. So the port engaged pro forma advisors on July 22nd, 2014, to begin a feasibility study. The original scope of work looked at a 60-day timeframe that, that extended a little bit longer. There was a lot of detail in, in what we ended up going into, and a lot of collaborative work between port staff, pro forma, and the developers. So we worked as a group to come up with a product that really embraced what they initially provided to us as a concept, and then to work through that to recommendations and refinements of an eventual end product that the pro forma advisors recommended. The final report was posted on our website on Monday for, for the public to review. The scope of the analysis, we looked at two issues. First, the anchor attraction that the developer was proposing and whether that was feasible in the marketplace, and secondarily, what the scale of the overall attraction should be, both based on what the market was locally, what the market was regionally, and, and also based on what the competitive and comparable projects were, both locally and regionally. So we looked at all these things, came up with feasibility analysis on the anchor, as well as the scope and scale. Just to give a little background on, on the site and the market analysis around the site, the existing site has been experiencing very good revenue growth in the last three years. It's up about 28% since 2010, and so since the market and the economy has been recovering, so has the site, and we continue to build that market share at the site. We expect the numbers this year to be even greater than they were last year. The estimated visitors, as a result, have gone up significantly as well. To a couple of years ago, we were estimating that we had about 800,000 annual visitors, to now we're thinking that's in between 1.5 and 2 million annual visitors, which is significant considering what we have out at the site. The other thing about the site is that it makes up a very large part of the food and beverage spend in the local area, about 28%, so we can expect that any growth from what we do to transform the entire waterfront will directly assist us in building the site up because of its large share. And so therefore, reverse, anything we do at the site will reverberate throughout the system as well because of its large presence in the overall food and beverage of the entire waterfront and the San Pedro area. It's placed in a market that has some, some difficulties and some opportunities. So the opportunities, there's a huge opportunity to increase spending from outside the area. Right now, comparable marketplaces imported about half of their spending from outside their areas. Right now, in our marketplace, we're not importing, the raw statistics aren't importing any spending, so that shows that there's some opportunity for growth there, although we know that Port Sacal does bring in a large portion of outside visitors. And so we think we can build on that going into the future and continue to build that market share from well outside the region, something that typical RDNEs don't necessarily do. We have that growth power because of our unique setting on the waterfront and because of our setting in the Port of Los Angeles. We have a less... We have a less dense population around us. So our population in the 15-minute range is about half that in comparison to Long Beach. It's about 100,000 less than it is in the Redondo Beach area. And in both those situations, the spending capacity is much less than both of those. And so those all dictate what you can build, the scale that you can support based on regional. The thing with a feasibility study is, in Los Angeles, it has to look at very close in. If it looked at too far out, 30 minutes, everything looks perfect because within 30 minutes, you have 4 million people in any development. And so in Los Angeles, the feasibility study has to really focus in on that 15-minute drive to differentiate it from other things. But we know we have opportunities.
I question that because sometimes in order for us to spend dollars, we go 30 minutes away.
Sure.
And why didn't the study indicate, I mean, look at a 30-minute drive? We're always finding ourselves go to downtown LA, go to Hollywood, go to Orange County or elsewhere to spend our dollars.
It looks at both. I'm just saying, as a baseline, it says, within the 15-minute drive, this is what you have to work with. But it also demonstrates that we have huge opportunities to bring in more and more from outside the area because we have a history of doing that.
There are opportunities.
Yes, yes, there are, as we've proven up to this point. So the market opportunities and limitations will dictate the recommended initial project scale. And then it's up to really the developer to implement something that succeeds to a greater level. And so that's what we're working on going forward. So initially, the feasibility report looks at the developer's initial concept and makes a determination on that. So the developer's initial concept was about 300,000 square feet of retail, dining, and entertainment, which includes the attraction anchor in there. About 100,000 square feet was dedicated to the attraction. About 200,000 square feet dedicated to typical retail, dining, and entertainment, smaller-type entertainment uses, more focused on the dining side of things. Pro forma then went in. They made refinement recommendations based on the market analysis that we already discussed. And they determined that first, the developer's initial concept for a large-scale attraction was not feasible in the marketplace due to several reasons. And therefore, a medium-scale attraction was something that would work, though, and that would operate well in the marketplace. That coupled with a smaller scale of initial retail, dining, and entertainment that could scale up over time as the market demands. So we're looking at an overall build of about 200,000 gross-leased area, about 215,000 in total built.
Mike, if I can stop you. One of the major differences between the project proposed by the developer and the project recommended in the study, as you indicated, was the size of a themed attraction. And what is the size of the attraction that is recommended by the study? And how many visitors will it attract?
Approximately 55,000 square feet and visitors, about 550,000 visitors.
That's not including retail, dining, entertainment?
That's just to that. And then unique visitors, meaning that those visitors will probably be split down the middle. Half of them will end up going to retail, dining, entertainment as well. Half of them will end up just going to the attraction. Unique visitors is about half that, half of the 550. But total 550 that would actually go to the attraction on an annual basis.
And, okay, again, is not the 550,000 annually, that does not include those visiting retail, entertainment, dining?
About half of them would also, half of them would also go to the retail, dining, and entertainment. But there's a significant amount that would go to retail, dining, entertainment that would not necessarily go to the attraction. So the developer's initial concept was deemed to be infeasible mainly because there were lack of market benchmarks in a for-profit model for that type of attraction. As the attractions get larger, they tend to become more museum-type. And they tend to be subsidized by either governmental organizations or large philanthropic institutions. And so they can bring in a lot more people because their ticket prices are very low. They're not a for-profit operation. They're just trying to bring in enough money, basically, to pay for their operating expenses.
So in this case, it was Nat Geo.
It was Nat Geo.
How does Nat Geo differ than the Long Beach Aquarium or the LA County Natural History Museum in LA?
So in both those situations, there are subsidies being brought in from government. In Long Beach, the situation is...
You said these are nonprofits.
It's a city, it's a major factor there as far as propping up the operational expenses. The same with the LA County Museum or any other large-scale museum that you may see that's above that.
Supplemented by government.
Exactly. And so what they're looking at, though, what their proposal is, it's a for-profit-type model. It's a commercial model where the attraction stands alone as a business model and can survive by itself as a rent-paying tenant to them.
So how's the aquarium surviving in Baltimore?
In Baltimore?
Yes, it's an attraction. It's huge.
It's probably with some sort of subsidy, either from a philanthropic organization. There may be donors associated with that. But at that size, it's not as a standalone for-profit basis. So the themed attraction anchor will not also drive significant proportion of overall visitors to the site. It will drive a good portion of visitors, but it's not as alone going to be an anchor that drives visitors to the whole site. The whole site will need to depend on itself to do that. Meaning, not the whole site, but the retail, dining, entertainment will need to depend on itself, as it does today. It drives a lot of visitors today. And we expect that with the new product out there, it will continue to drive a lot of visitors and an increased number of visitors into the future with the new product.
Seven days a week.
That's what we're building towards. So I'll get into a little bit of that as well. Our current market is a little bit less than that. But we need to build on top of that to make it work. So building on the existing, as you just said, weekend daytime visitor strength, we need to build that into the nighttime. We need to build that into the daytime. We need to build that into the weekend and the weekday nighttime. So we have an overall attraction that is operating at all times. Right now, it's really focused on the weekends and really focused during the day. If we grow that out, then there's an ability to grow out visitors. And so that's the main focus. We have a very strong market base right now. We need to build on top of that with different things, which is a better product.
And that's what we owe to the people of the state.
That's what we're working towards, is the redevelopment so that we can bring in more visitors from the state of California. We need to incorporate the existing successful businesses. We have quite a few existing successful businesses that are very successful in any market that you would put them in. And we need to build off of those to make sure that they are placed in the development in a way that they can succeed into the future and continue to bring in those large visitor numbers that they're bringing in today. And that's a very important component of the findings of the feasibility study as well. We need to create a unique mix of business. And that both goes to proportion and style. So proportionally, we need to really focus on food and beverage. That is where we're good at now, and that's where we'll be good at in the future. That's what people come down to the waterfront to do, to take in the vistas that we have and to eat and drink on the waterfront and to experience the main channel experience. And so we need to build off of that. Their retail component should probably be, as recommended in the report, about a third of the overall, with the food and beverage being about two-thirds of that.
What type of tenants does the study recommend on the food and beverage? I mean, are we, these national chain restaurants and retailers? Are they existing restaurants and businesses?
It does not recommend national chains. It recommends that we need to distinguish ourselves from that because that is what you have at a lot of other comparable and competitive projects. We need to create something that is unique and to create something that matches with our unique setting on the main channel. And so they're looking towards one-off type of food and beverage type of locations that are unique to San Pedro, therefore, bringing people into the unique setting, the unique development to experience something that they cannot experience in other places. So it really focuses, the recommendations are to focus away from what you could get at other RDNE-type of developments around the region and build something that is unique to San Pedro.
I just, okay, I struggle with this because I think, if you look at major ports across the country, you have a good mix of the large-scale national chain restaurants with the small mom-and-pops, the small businesses. And it can work, and it will work. So we say, on this component of the study, we say, thank you for that recommendation, but I don't think we should listen to it.
It's an opinion, and everything can be taken with balance. So you have to look at the developer's overall scheme of things, and they're going to balance this opinion versus what they believe is going to work out there. And they're going to take a developer's risk and try to deliver the best possible product. And that may be a mix, or it may be all unique. I'm not sure, but it's an opinion, so we can take it as that.
Opinion with a capital O.
And then a very important part is to reconfigure the site, to build on the main channel viewpoints. What we currently have is a site that is really forcing people after they eat back into the parking lot and out to their cars and away from the site. We want to force people after they eat back onto the main channel, out to vistas and out to walkways that connect the overall development so you can advance from restaurant to restaurant, from restaurant to retail, from open space to a walking area. So you can really experience the whole thing without being pushed back out to your car. And so you stay longer, there's a larger spend there. And there's an overall sense of feeling because there's a lot more people that are hanging out all day. And so that's one of the main components, is to reconfigure, which goes to infrastructure, including the promenade. Some of the projected economic impacts are significant. The jobs that would be created based on the target scenario, which is what I discussed, at about the 215,000 square feet range, 850 full-time equivalent jobs which will be generated. 522 of those are incremental from what you currently have today. Tax revenue, 87 million total. About 53 million of that is in addition to what you have today. And then visitors, a significant uptick in visitors. 2.8 to 3.8 million site visitors projected, which is 1.3 to 2.3 million more than you have today. So we have some significant numbers produced from an RDNE development, which is unique because what we have here to offer is unique if developed correctly. That is the end of my report. Open up to questions now, or if you want to open up to public comments?
No, I want to ask a important question to Mike. What are the two most important things you need in life?
The two most important things I need in life? Happy wife.
Water and relationships.
That's right.
And water for cleansing our body and growing our food and relationships. One of the things that I felt about Ports of Call, and I remember opened up about how many people took the ferry boat across and remember this, you know, when I had a big family I grew up in, we'd come down and watch the men work, load ships. You actually saw the cargo, and it was a different time. But at Ports of Call, you're not to the water. If you don't see the water, you don't get excited. I think what makes us very special is Southern Californians. We have this great ocean out here, which we're proud to protect and improve. We have these great mountains. Even though we can't get to the beach every day unless you live in Redondo Beach or Hermosa or right down here next to Walker's down there off of the end of Western, you have this thought you can get there. So the most important thing I want to see in this is that there should be a broad walkway on the waterfront, on the water, get to the water. And the other example, I just want to say, Mr. Bouscayino. In 1934, the farmers of West Los Angeles got together and they went to Third and Fairfax and parked the bumpers of their trucks together. They created Farmer's Market. Of the 118 stalls that are there right now, I think 109 are of small merchants. And the rest are some big. You need big and small, but there's a big. And then also, this benefit with the Grove coming in, and that uplifted it. It's a traffic-y thing. Thing on Baltimore, you've got I-95 that goes right through Baltimore. You do have a disadvantage because this freeway ends here. That's why you want to have Destination Freeway, San Pedro. So every time they say there's something on the San Pedro freeway, you think about going to San Pedro because you do that in Long Beach. And light rail to convert some of that weekend, bring in weekend. People want to, there's more people doing things in Southern California, in Southern California, whether it's staycation or just easier to do than we've ever had before. So this is an opportunity, a golden opportunity for you. If you want to ask a few more questions, then I want to make sure everybody gets their shot.
I had a question on phasing, the phasing of a project. The feasibility study recommends a much smaller scaled-down project than what the developer originally proposed. And frankly, a smaller project than I and the rest of the community were expecting. If the port and developer were to move forward with a project as a recommended size, would there be an opportunity for a Phase 2 development?
The original proposal by the developer assumed phasing. It assumed that the initial portion that would be built, what was going to be about 200 to 250,000 square feet. And then Phase 2 would come after that. I think we looked at it initially from, ideally, we could build this all at the same time. But it was always going to be phased based on the market. And so the intent would remain consistent that as long as the developer's going to build a significant amount of the square footage that is provided under the EIR, they would build that first. And then on top of that, they would have the ability to grow as the market demanded.
And of that Phase 2, can that be a part of a lease agreement with the LA Waterfront Alliance?
It would be part of it. So the lease would be to build out 375,000 square feet. And then their proposal would be, ideally, to build out something that was feasible initially, which is, we know it's around 215,000 square feet, based on this opinion. Their opinion may be a little bit different, and they may build more than that initially. So it would allow them to build that. As long as they were ready to make the commitment to build a significant portion of that upfront, then it would be consistent.
And does the study include, look at the opportunities to extend the development further south along the waterfront to the Marina, the Fruit Docks, perhaps?
The study did not look at that. The study was very much focused on the Ports of Call development and the concept provided by the LA Waterfront Alliance.
I think it'd be advantageous if we tie in some other port property in the future. I'd like to look at opportunities for development along the Cabrillo Marina and the Outer Harbor as well. Also, I'd like to reiterate a point that I made early. I really see this recommendation as a first phase of waterfront redevelopment. It should act as a catalyst moving forward for future development, both in the waterfront and along Harbor Boulevard in our downtown San Pedro area. Did the feasibility study take into account the Alta C project?
It did. It took into account all the attractions that exist around the port today and that will exist in the future, such as Alta C. So it looked at how there was interaction between them. It looked at what the type of demographics that would call at those other attractions and how those could be brought in and help cross-pollinate each other. So it did look at that to some degree. It didn't study those other attractions as standalone feasibility. It studied it in relation...
Did it study a correlation, perhaps, between...
It studied a correlation, connectivity, the importance of connectivity physically and the importance of building a development on the Ports of Call site that could tap into the demographics that you have at those different attractions, which is significantly different from what we have at Ports of Call today. So there, once again, another opportunity from a significant population pool that's already in the area, coming here for different things that you can then bring into the Ports of Call site. So that was looked at.
Tell us a little about the infrastructure, the necessary infrastructure that's needed to make this development successful moving forward.
The feasibility study really focused on a couple of things. Connectivity and bringing the waterfront forward. And so connectivity includes Sampson Way and getting that done and creating the connection down to Ports of Call, creating the traffic or eliminating the traffic congestion issues that you have today. Connectivity on the waterfront, which is the promenade, really, and tying in the promenade to Sampson Way, to the Town Square Park. So you have those open spaces connected. You're bringing people from downtown, down into the Town Square through events or what have you, and then down onto the promenade and into the overall development. So it talked really about, those are the main three components. There were some smaller components that were added in there as well that are just necessities of redevelopment. But those are the main three components.
And there was assumptions of costs of infrastructure at $61 million, is that correct?
Yes, those are numbers that were provided by the port. Those are numbers that we have been holding for some time. And we continue to work on those numbers to try to reduce them so that we can provide a more transformative project.
Well, I want to see a commitment from the port and the infrastructure moving forward. And you heard Mr. Soroka has shared that commitment as well. Is a feasibility for the developer to pay for the infrastructure moving forward?
That is not feasible. The report concluded that, that there's not enough money in the overall development for them to pay for infrastructure on top of paying for their development. So that's not feasible.
But at the same time, the feasibility study didn't say who was going to pay, who's responsible for the infrastructure.
It did not, but there's only one other party out there. So between us, I should correct that. We did do a lot of work, starting in January, with other city staff, including the CLA and the CAO, who, one of which participated on the RFP for this feasibility study, in talking about different ways to make this a citywide project and the importance of bringing in citywide interest in this project to develop the city of Los Angeles as a world-class waterfront. We talked a lot about that, and we're going to continue to ask for help in doing that, whether it be through alternative financing, looking at issues regarding parking that we talked about, or whether it be tax increment, coming back into the project to support project infrastructure. All those things will help to create a transformative project that I think we all want and the citizens of the city of Los Angeles want as well. We just need assistance from folks downtown to help us with that and to work that into the process to be successful.
And as far as the, we heard Mr. Soroka make a commitment to a dollar amount on the infrastructure. Can the port make a commitment on the project schedule and delivery?
That is the next step.
That will tie in...
That's part of what...
That's the direction I'd give. I'd give the port, I mean, they can vote on dollars, dollar amount. But I want to see the schedule, project delivery schedule, and hold everyone accountable to see a project get done here, specifically with the infrastructure.
That's part of the process, is developing that policy around what we know is the project schedule, ideally, and making sure that whatever we are committing fits into that and can produce the project that we know we can have based on the feasibility study.
And tell us about residential. How does a local market within a 15-minute drive compare to other developments like Long Beach and Redondo Beach, Santa Monica? And just answer the residential piece.
The local market here is limited. So in that 15-minute drive, you have about 330,000, more or less, in the local market here. In the 15-minute drive from Long Beach, you have about 660,000. So it's significant. It's double. But those are hundreds of thousands of residents that you would need to increase density through in the local community to get up to those levels. And so that needs to be done. There's no question about that. It needs to be done over a period of time to bring in denser uses into the harbor area throughout the LA waterfront.
So does the study look at a potential growth of housing in this area? And how would it impact the project?
It did not look specifically into the growth of housing, just like it did not look at residential on the site either. That wasn't part of the scope of work. But I think when you look at the scale that needs to be picked up to get to those levels and to get to the level of spending that, like an area like Long Beach has, it's pretty significant. And so it needs to be much further than the... And so it needs to be much further than the site.
And just for those joining us, tell us why, why haven't we built residential to date?
We haven't built residential because it's restricted under the State Thailand's Trust. We cannot build residential on any of the lands that the port owns, subject to the trust. And so that is the reason. The port has gone through an extensive study on this issue dating back to 2000, up through about 2005, 2006. And the port spent significant amount of resources studying this issue with external sources, with state lands as well, and trying to solve that in a variety of different ways because we heard from a lot of developers-
But why does State Thailand see us differently than other ports across the state? You know, there's residential in San Francisco, in San Diego, in Oakland. How are we different? Are we in a different trust or what?
Same trust. I think the biggest issue that came back from state lands was bringing residential closer to the main channel and the largest shipping port in the country was a concern from them and how that would affect things. We have issues now with health risk and things of that nature with uses that are tied into the port. And the more that you bring that in, the more difficult it becomes in going through environmental processes. And so that was an issue-
We've seen a reduction over 80% of emissions. It's a new port.
It's a new port, but that was still an issue. And my understanding that that was a concern that they had was bringing residential closer to the main channel and cargo operation.
As I explained to some groups around town, that's an issue. Secondly, the issue of a maximum 50-year lease. How can, we look at other ways to get through the 50-year lease. My understanding is that the 50-year max lease term can make it difficult for a developer to pencil out a deal. Rather, banks, you know, today are looking for terms that coincide with the useful life of a building structure and those terms are 60, 70, 80 years, 99 years. Did the feasibility study address that issue of the limitations of the lease agreement of years?
It did not look at that specifically.
Okay. Because Redondo Beach today, it's, they're offering the developer there a 99-year lease and Redondo, City Redondo Beach is putting, I believe, Becca, 25, $75 million in the infrastructure. 25, 25 million dollars. Okay, Mr. Labange had to step out on a call. Thank you so much, Mike. I mean, geez, talk about a subject matter expert. We thank the consultants for their opinions moving forward, but we're going to seek the best and highest use of our waterfront and continue to be bold moving forward. Thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you.
Point of privilege if I may?
I'm going to turn this over to your councilman, Mr. Buscagno. And I'm going to ask you to have these cards called, okay?
Very good.
I want to ask the CLA to take a record. I got called back to downtown.
You have T committee.
This is a card two on item number one. Just ask this question to Mr. Clerk. Is Fred Bernardo here?
He, Bernardo?
He, Bernardo.
On number one or number two?
Hold on a second. On number one.
Originally, I wanted to be for number two, but my questions were answered, so you couldn't-
File the card. So that's okay. We got that business, so that's the only thing you're going to worry about. I want you to do this, Joe.
(laughing).
Sit right there. I'll get that.
Oh, God.
I'll give you the big shot.
I'm perfectly fine here. Okay, if I can, we are going to kick off the-
You should do this. Hold on, Joe.
Yeah.
Just to help out here. Mr. Clerk, do we have any consent items?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we have items four and five, which are foreign trade. One is foreign trade zone-
Oh, very good. Foreign trade so important.
And the permit for SSA Pacific. So if you want to handle those, you have a quorum.
Move by Mr. Buscagno, second by myself.
Five, move the item.
Five, move it, second it. Mr. Buscagno will handle the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Chairman Labange, thank you very much for joining us, coming down.[854.73][854.73](applause). A point of privilege if I may, I want to call up the founder of the Bridge to Breakwater, John Papadakis, to ask a few questions. He has been in the forefront of the development efforts along the waterline. Just a few questions and we'll turn it over to cards. Mr. Papadakis, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for calling me up.
You started this effort with Jimmy Hahn, Mayor Hahn at the time, as a founder of Bridge to Breakwater. Give us a little history and some of, you know, what do you envision this waterfront to look like in 10 years from now?
In my opinion, and the reason why the Bridge to the Breakwater took life, was because we needed to create life on our waterfront. Our waterfront, the use of our waterline was creating such great poverty here and the decline of our living standards and our quality of life. We are the poorest, most troubled seaside on the West Coast and have the anomaly of being housed within the wealthiest port in the Western Hemisphere. That is a high crime and a punishment. Think about it. There are, citizens have rights and they're called waterfront rights. Their right is primary access to the waterline. We can realize that through building the Grand Promenade from the Bridge to the Breakwater and finally connecting, sharing, illuminating, and making valuable our waterline to everyone. The waterline is not supposed to work for two or three families. The waterline has to work for everyone in the city and the state, the true owners of the citizens. Just like cargo serves the people, commercial development must serve the people and put people to work. The second right is that the waterline go to the highest and best use for the true owners. We can't say that in San Pedro. That's why we're so poor. That's why we have such devastation in the streets. Do you think that the cities, all the port cities up and down the coast of this country and the thousands of jobs and the waterfront access and the wonderful commercial stuff exists there is an illusion? And ask yourself, when you walk outside this building, is the poverty a lie? What's the truth here? The truth is, I believe that this feasibility study is anemic and it is intentionally misguided. It's a way out for the port to do as little as possible. It's a way in for a questionable developer to appear as if they're qualified and are only option. Now, they may be qua- they're sitting here in this room. They may be able to deliver the message, but it's, I've yet to see it. They have access to me, they can always show me. And it's a dirty way to maintain and perpetuate a cruel and unjust power in this area. The power of keeping an entire section of the city, the southern section of the city, not San Pedro, not Wilmington, the harbor area, on its economic knees, begging for help, Joe. And you're sitting there saying, no, we need this, we want more. You're trying to lead on this subject and make it so difficult. It's upsetting to me, I'm sorry. Please ask me a question.
What would you like to, 10 years from now, what do you envision this waterfront to look like?
Well, it should be an urban waterfront mecca and it goes from the Bridge to the Breakwater. Wherever you create public access, whether it's rivers, lakes, but especially seaside, you create an economic bonanza. The owner shouldn't be on just Ports of Call. The owner should be on the entire waterfront. And once you create that, it's a whole vision. Jimmy Hahn saw that. Mayor Reardon saw that. Viergoza took it sideways. And I question this mayor's direction right now, as expressed through the commissioners in this feasibility port. I question his will. I encourage you to fight, Joe, and I encourage you to stand up and fight for the people because you're carrying a populist message forward for public access, highest and best use, and to enjoy the economic opportunity that people represent. You know, the Southerners in the South years ago denied, through segregation, denied a whole people their rights, their economic opportunity rights. I feel that way in this community regarding the port and how the cities handle this place. Tom Labange may want to change the name of the freeway to the Harbor Freeway. However, it wouldn't change the fact that they enter a very poor seaside and sometimes dark and dangerous. My goodness, we can't even have an inner harbor high school football game without multiple shootings. What does that say about us? Let's tell the truth and let's exclaim the necessity for these things and the investment. Billions for cargo, billions for industrial, so much to the point that we've become an industrial and social service dumping ground for the city instead of a great seaside destination, which we must become. We share this vision.
Yes.
Let's fight for it together.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, John.[1175.91][1175.91](applause). Okay, we, I allotted more time for Mr. Papadakis being the founder of the Bridge to Breakwater development. We have several cards. I can't, I'm inspired and I can't thank you enough for coming to speak on this item. If we can have a one-minute comment on, we have numerous cards. Bring up Tommy Favava, followed by Ron Miller. Is Ron here? There's Ron. Thanks, Tommy, for joining us.
Good afternoon, Buscagno. My name is Tommy Favavi. I'm representing IBW Local Levin. You know, I talk to our members all the time when it comes to our members living here in San Pedro. And a lot of our members that live here in San Pedro, they like to see more attraction here in San Pedro, you know? With the Ports of Call development being proposed to the port, they say that's great, you know? And they feel that attracting that would bring more people to this region and bring more construction jobs, bring more economic boost for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy. Ron Miller, followed by Elise Swanson and Emily Vidovic.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Thanks, Ron, for being here.
Ron Miller, Executive Secretary of the LA Orange County Building Trades. I represent 140,000 men and women in LA and Orange County, many thousands that live in this area. And I came here when I was a kid. I grew up not too far from here. This is where we brought everybody when they come from back east to show them the ocean. This is a diamond in the rough. The city needs to put the money into it and polish the diamond. Let's bring this back to what it can be and be a great tourism place to bring people from all over the area. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you.[1301.07][1301.07](applause). Elise Swanson.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Elise Swanson, President of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, here today representing more than 370 Chamber business members. And we're here today, Councilmember, to thank you for your leadership and your vision on the waterfront issue. We wholeheartedly support you and we back you in your efforts. And I want to say I'm somewhat optimistic after reading the feasibility study because a project obviously can happen here, but we do agree with you. We think now is the time to be bold, to be aggressive, to really look at a larger project that could be a true attraction for the region. And we do support a mix of authentic and chain draws to the waterfront. Many organizations have been on the front lines of this issue. Myself, I've worked on it since 2001 in a variety of roles, was, participated in the ULI study of 2001. And I think now is the time and we really applaud you. But we encourage the city to move quickly with these developers, the LA Waterfront Alliance with Wayne Rakovich and the Johnsons. We believe they are a credible, respected team. And next steps, we're happy to hear that Gene Soroka is going to present dollars for infrastructure, but we completely agree with you that the timeline is critical and we need to move forward now.
Thank you.
And just one other thing, we want to ask for a waterfront czar or director to be appointed that can focus on this waterfront moving forward, the infrastructure, the leases and the development. Thank you.
Thank you.[1396.16][1396.16](applause). Emily Vidovic, thanks for joining us, Emily. And she'll be followed by Antonio Perosi III and Lauren Antonelos.
Thank you. My name is Emily Vidovic and I'm a senior at San Pedro High School. I am here today in support of Councilman Buscagno's vision for a prosperous waterfront. Our town desperately needs to be reinvigorated and creating a dynamic culture filled with retail, dining and entertainment opportunities will do just that. It is time for us to capitalize on this area through environmentally conscious expansion, comprehensive job creation and common sense measures designed to make our community better. Now is not the time to shy away from progress. Now is the time to actively pursue development in every way possible. A call upon the port to commit to building the Sampson Way realignment, constructing the Town Square and extending the waterfront promenade without delay. The most fiscally irresponsible thing you could do at this point is not invest in these lucrative projects. The potential monetary and cultural gains that will be obtained by revitalizing the port cannot be stressed enough. Please do not be wary of progress, but embrace it wholeheartedly and please step up and be the innovative leaders that we desperately need. There is no room for hesitation. The time is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.[1473.73][1473.73](applause). Antonio?
Thank you, Councilman. My name's Antonio Perosi and I'm a senior at San Pedro High School. Now, I'm in support of Councilman Buscagno's visions for a transformative waterfront development that will bring retail, dining and entertainment to our town. Many times have I traveled outside the city to meet with friends or have a nice family dinner. We found that there are a variety of different places that we can go to be with each other, not only just to eat out or see a movie, but simply walk around. Our waterfront has a potential to be one of these attractions to many people. When I've driven past Ports of Call and the waterfront, I envision thousands of families throughout the week and weekend visiting and enjoying themselves. The key to the waterfront development is for the port to commit the funding for the infrastructure improvements. Also, the jobs for the future of the people like me reside on our waterfront once it is developed. Today, teens are being educated and going to college, but the jobs for us do not reside in San Pedro. They reside elsewhere. This must change and the jobs for our future begin at the waterline. So invest to secure the future for the next generation that is standing before you today. Thank you.
Thanks, Antonio.[1551.12][1551.12](applause). When you have dinner, Antonio, what the commissioner remind him of that? He's been a champion for us.[1558.12][1558.12](laughing). He's been a true hero for us on this commission. Thank you. Lauren. And Lauren will be followed by Alberto Encinas and Keith R. Bah, is it? B-A-H? Ball. Lauren.
Hello, my name is Lauren Antonelos and I'm a junior at San Pedro High School, speaking on behalf of San Pedro's youth. I have lived here in San Pedro my whole life, but I've never felt the sense of community that my parents talk so fondly about. They talk about the days where they would all hang out down at Ports of Call and surrounding areas, but I for one know that I'm, when I'm with my friends, we never decide to go to the port to hang out. People often credit San Pedro's youth as being the bad kids, but I think the first step to changing this would be renovating the waterfront. Teens like me will be more willing to go and hang out down there with more teen-friendly attractions. Along with these attractions, we will have more jobs for our friends and family and as San Pedro grows, our youth will grow with it. With Buscagno's vision for a more family and teen-friendly waterfront, we can take a monumental step into restoring San Pedro into the tight-knit family it once was. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.[1630.91][1630.91](applause). Alberto, I'm inspired by these, the youth coming forward. I really appreciate your presence here. We appreciate your presence. Alberto Encinas.
Hello, my name is Alberto Encinas and I'm a junior at San Pedro High School, speaking in favor of Joe Buscagno's vision of the waterfront, the port. We look at it every day with its beauty and great seafood restaurants, but do we actually appreciate it? The port is not just a vital part of our multicultural community, but it is our community. The sad truth is that our port, our main attraction, isn't appreciated in today's San Pedrin mentality. These opportunities offered by the port are endless and vast, but the younger generations doesn't see it this way. They see it as a washed-up old place that needs renovations. That's why the economic growth of this amazing attraction is vital to today's younger generation. The reason we are encouraged to go to college so far away is because the opportunities offered here for us aren't for us. Simple, yet vital renovations are exactly what we need to reinvigorate our port. We as a generation are inheriting this amazing town and we are going to have to live with the decisions being made here today. Fifteen years from now, my kids will not want to go down to the port and for that reason, unless things change, I will not be coming back after I leave for college. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay Keith Ball will be followed by June Smith, Jonathan Williams and Derek Miden? Miden. Good afternoon.
How you doing, Councilman?
Good sir, thanks for being here.
I'm with the Wilmington, my name's Keith Ball. I'm with the Wilmington Waterfront Development or Waterfront Forward Group. I have no problems with the plans to improve Ports of Call, which has had 51 years to get it right. However, in 2009, the LA Harbor Board of Commissioners passed a resolution to afford Wilmington a chance at a waterfront, but didn't keep that promise. In 1909, Avalon Boulevard was Canal Street, which was a waterfront canal that almost reached Anaheim. The port raised Canal Street to afford more access, port access to the waterfront. At one time, folks could walk down Canal Street to the waterfront in Wilmington. It's Wilmington's turn to have a shot at, a support, a shot at and support a Fisherman's Wharf styled area in that region. We are working hard with the Wilmington Neighborhood Council to make it happen.
Thank you Keith. Thanks Keith for being here as well. Thank you. June Smith, followed by Jonathan Williams and Derek. Good afternoon.
Hi Joe, how are you?
See you. Good.
It's fun to be here.
Thanks for joining us.
One minute is kind of scarce here for all the things I'd like to say.
You have a media agenda.
What I would like to emphasize, I think, are maybe two or three things. First of all, thank you for, let's say, leading the charge here. We need that kind of energy and we need that kind of persistence. Some of us have been at this for three decades. I think that it's interesting that the feasibility study is just one opinion. I hope that this committee and the Harbor Commissioners will look at all of the studies that have been done. All the ULI studies and the feasibilities from the past because it's the aggregation of those that will inform you best. Number two, remember that waterfront planning, ULI emphasized, build for local people first. That means this needs to be both historical and it needs to be new and exciting. But it also needs to be connected to downtown. That's where the people on this side of Harbor Boulevard are coming from. And I didn't hear that today. I didn't hear that connectivity. And it's very, very important to those of us, I'm not in business, but live here. And the third thing I want to say is transportation Joe. We don't have the public transport, it ain't gonna work. It's gotta be for rich and poor. It's gotta be for locals and regional and international. And so, yes, build the parking structures, build Sampson Way, that's only a beginning. But let's get that light rail. In the meantime, let's do the buses or something else because you just can't. You cannot depend on a single car occupancy. It won't work.
Thanks June. Jonathan Williams, followed by Derek. And followed by Mike Langaro. Jonathan, welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your continued leadership on the waterfront. You know, right now, the battleship Iowa, which sits down on the waterfront here, I wanted to go over a few little things. We're ranked number 10 out of 401 attractions in Los Angeles. We're also continually ranked in the top 20 of paid attractions in LA by the Tourism Board. So we are a community asset with meaningful learning and volunteer opportunities, including the introduction of our upcoming youth program. We also host volunteer groups, which includes Tourism Cares, which will be here the next two days. And I'm proud to say we have 110,000 hours volunteered between 2013 and 2014. One of our challenges is that we're a tourist attraction museum that currently acts as a standalone destination at birth 87. And we strongly support collaboration and synergy amongst all stakeholders along the waterfront. We need to be tied into the waterfront. We need to be tied to the promenade. So we strongly support redevelopment and changes in the waterfront that will create a denser waterfront. And will also take into account our different parking utilization in the promenade and keeping cruise passengers here in Los Angeles, which right now they're heading to Long Beach. Each step will get us closer to that. We are successful, but we're not going to be as successful as we need to be, especially looking at San Francisco, San Diego and Long Beach, without an entire waterfront that is a destination as a whole. We can't be a standalone.
Thanks Jonathan. Derek Miden?
Hi there. My name's Derek Hayden and I represent Tourism Cares, which is a community of the travel and tourism industry, 7.5 million workforce in the United States. And we have about 300 people coming to San Pedro simply because it is a diamond in a rough. And the travel and tourism community believes wholeheartedly in connecting attractions and communities to actually create that sense of being and to create economic good. Many folk dramatically underestimate the power of the travel and tourism space. It represents 9% of GDP globally. For every 33 visitors that come to the United States, one US job is created. And there is a ripple effect of $1.9 trillion into the economy, supporting 14.4 million jobs. So Tourism Cares selected San Pedro simply because of the vision for LA's waterfront and actually really putting a spotlight on a community that is underserved and that most people outside of the community do not think of it in a positive light. The experience that the Tourism Cares team has had in working with folk at Iowa, with the LA Port, with numerous attractions, we're going to be working at six attractions, has been quite phenomenal. And we look for that ripple effect within the community to actually continue work that we start. And we would like to invite yourself and others to join us on Friday for a volunteer event.
Thank you so much. Mike Langaro. Mike will be followed by Louis Dominguez, Pat Nave and Stephanie Marticich.
Councilman Buscagno, how you doing? Thank you for the time. So I'm Mike Langaro. My family and I are the owners of California's largest restaurant, the San Pedro Fish Market. We currently hold four Guinness World Records and have attracted over 1 million visitors from all over California in the last 12 months. We are also a current tenant of the Port of Los Angeles on the LA waterfront. After more than five decades, our lease will be coming to an end in seven weeks. We really appreciate your vision and after reading the report, and we did, it's all 250 pages, appreciate that bringing in Kidzania, which is a children's museum that's foreign known and based in Mexico and that appears to have found some success in the Middle East and Mexico and Asia. It looks compelling, so we wanted to reiterate some of the details in that report. As the feasibility study details, the foundation of the waterfront's success is based on our company, San Pedro Fish Market. According to the study, our company provides a waterfront with over 50% of its financial results, 70% of its paid visitors, nearly 80% of its year-over-year growth. We note that all those accomplishments and those of like businesses are lumped together anonymously together while assuming that our company and our peers can provide twice as much financial result. Even after our net space is cut by 30%, our rent is raised by 138% to match the highest net rate in the entire country, I'm sorry, county, based on the current market standard. That would be the Mid-Wilshire District. And over $40 million in infrastructure investments will be made on behalf of a private company that, as far as I can tell from the report, is based in Mexico. For 57 years in a row in the city of Los Angeles, we have grown waterfront tourism. As the report cites, we are responsible for over 1 million to 1.5 million visitors to the region. That places us among the top 10 LA County tourist attractions, more than all three existing LA County kids museums and Kidzania combined. And we accomplish this without a single subsidy. We also note from the report that we are the only paid tourist attraction in California that attracts over 1 million people annually and has no long-term guarantee of location, lease or lease amount. And as the report continually cites, Orlando, Anaheim and even Indianapolis all provide their anchor attractions with guaranteed long-term leases, locations and lease amounts. The report recommends adding Kidzania, a Mexican children's museum that will attract less than half of what our business currently attracts at a cost of $40 million, which will go to, as far as I can tell, a foreign country based in Mexico. Additionally, this new anchor will be the fourth children's museum in LA County and will charge more for attendance than all three current LA County kids museums combined. Nearly 80% of their visitors, sorry, this last paragraph, nearly 80% of their visitors in Mexico globally come from within a 25-mile radius, while the current waterfront already draws up to 750,000 annually from a 100-square-mile radius, which is in accordance with the goal of the Tidestones Act. The other 250,000 are visiting from beyond that 100 miles and those are our customers.
Thanks Mike. Louis Dominguez. Followed by Pat Nave. Stephanie here.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here. Louis Dominguez, candidate for State Senate. And I'm here because when I read this story in the paper, I got angry. You know, for many years, they have called San Pedro the stepchild of Los Angeles and this article made me feel that we really are. You know, I hear, well, we're not big enough to have the big toys. Long Beach is, they can have it, but we're, you know, we gotta stay with the small stuff. And I don't believe that. I, you know, people have been coming to San Pedro for years, in large numbers. We give them something to come to, they will come. And, you know, this idea that we are not big enough to do it is insanity. And I just think that the plans that are made are fantastic. We gotta keep with them, the port's gotta keep with them. Thank you.
Thanks Louis. Pat Nave. Followed by Stephanie Marticich, followed by Diana Nave.
Joe, you ask great questions. Your years in uniform did you some good. The, there's a couple of things missing from the feasibility study. One is the impact on the area south of 9th to 19th Street and west of Beacon Street. Where AB 283 came along and we did community plans, that was the area we thought would develop the most because even then, back in the 70s, we were looking at renovation of the waterfront. These delays hurts our credibility in Los Angeles. Waterfronts all across the country have been able to get stuff done and we haven't been able to do it. So let's get the infrastructure done. I'm glad to see the port actually committing to it. It was supposed to be done by 2014. There is one thing that you can do. Housing is going to be tough legislatively, but legislatively, I do think what you can do is something about the term. The Tidestones Grant used to allow longer-term leases, I think 67 years back in the days when I was working here. And that should be a pretty easy fix with the state legislature and also with the city charter.
Thanks Pat. Stephanie Marticich. How are you? Followed by Diana Nave and then followed by Anthony Nizicich.
Good afternoon. There have been some very excellent and informed comments today and some comments that reflect a lot of ignorance. I wasn't necessarily going to speak. I came to listen, but I could not help but speak up for some of the people who aren't here today that represent my parents' generation, my generation and the future. And that speaks to preserving the history of our community. And when you say you're speaking for community, as much as I respect you and like you Joe, sometimes you are not. And I think generalizations like that have to be clarified. I have been vocal and I have been published in the Daily Breeze more than once, speaking up on behalf of saving Ports of Call. And that does not mean I'm against the project or what Alan and his team are doing. And I didn't check off for or against, I said general. Because if we do not remember where we came from and preserve our history for the future and we see the signs on the freeway, historic waterfront, historic downtown San Pedro. But we've torn the history down. Need I say Beacon Street? And many people in this room will know what I'm talking about. And there are people who just don't have the courage or they're more meek. They don't take the time to call your office, they don't write the letters. But I write a letter and I get more calls and emails that come out of the woodwork from people I've never heard of saying, thank you for speaking up for us. I grew up at Ports of Call, I remember how great it was. I remember my dad's buddy Lloyd Menvig, who was on the Harbor Commission, who said he would travel around the world and people would say, you're from San Pedro? Ports of Call, he was really from Wilmington. We loved it, you know, it was grand, yay for Wilmington and Phineas Banning. But it's so important and these young people, I was really impressed by how articulate they were. However, I went away to college in Boston and I returned. My family, who's been here 100 years, you know my history, many of you. My grandfather was a captain of industry in the tuna canning industry. His statue's right there at the Los Angeles Maritime Museum and I'm so proud of that and the new children's exhibit that's there, please go and see it. But we have always stood for culture and educational values and I will keep speaking up about that and just remind everyone in this room to remember that. And we can restore, revitalize, resurrect and bring in all the lovely nuances in attractions. But we shouldn't throw that baby out with the bathwater into the brink. Thank you.
Diana Nave, followed by Anthony Nizicich. And the last speaker on the item, Liz Johnson.
Good afternoon. First of all, I want to thank you for bringing this committee down here for an issue that is of such importance to our community. I didn't plan to speak, but I got incensed. I got incensed when I heard about the $1 billion to green the LA River and having trouble coming up with 61 million for infrastructure. Doesn't make any sense to me. So I really appreciate you pushing on that issue and continuing to push on it. Second of all, I think what June Smith said about the transportation issues is really, really important. And I think you need to let us know what to do to help with that. Third, I got incensed about the 15-minute limit, the definition of the 15 minutes and how many people would come to Ports of Call. As a teenager in Lococeno, which is a lot more than 15 minutes away, before there was much freeway, this was the place to go. It was the place to go. And when I had young children, it was the place to take my young children. If it doesn't happen now, I'm afraid we won't see it in my lifetime. So thank you.
Thank you Diana. Anthony, Anthony Nizicich still here? There he is. And then Liz Johnson, then we'll get to the next item. Mr. Nizicich, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much for letting me speak a few minutes because I wasn't intending to speak until I heard Papadakis speak. And we have had maybe 100 discussions on what he wants to do and what we think is best for the harbor. But I want to first commend and want you to know that I feel that the first aspect of the development of the Ports of Call by Radkovich and Johnson, I approve of everything that they're doing. I think they're doing a fantastic job and hopefully that the Harbor Department can get together and iron out their differences. My only comment, general comment, is on two things. And that's number one, John says that the waterfront belongs to the people. And that they built the first phase of it from the cruise lines down to 6th Street and it's on the waterfront. And what they can see from the waterfront, they can see the Iowa and the cruise lines, but they can't see the waterfront. So that's an inconsistency in why he wants to put the promenade on the waterfront. To me, the attraction to San Pedro over the years has been the waterfront. The fish markets and the fish boats and the entertainment that they had down there with the buildings and the restaurants and whatnot. And I believe that when the new mayor came out and set down two, he set down three policies. Number one, to build the economics of Los Angeles, to bring in new industry and to develop the waterfront from Wilmington to Cabrillo Beach. And the first thing that happened was that they were going to redevelop the Ports of Call. But it has nothing to do with his, what he came out and says, we want to develop a port that has a distinctive advantage of any and all ports in the United States. And the distinctive advantage of the United States is that our atmosphere and our attraction should be accommodating and taking into consideration after the last century, where we brought immigrants from Italy and Croatia, from the Pacific Rim, on the east coast, to bring in, starting the fishing industry and labor and whatnot. And they did on the east coast, the Irish and the Europeans came to there. And so the greatest generation built the 20th century. My generation.
Can you wrap it up please?
Okay. So what I'm talking about, what I want to get back to is the parking area that you're talking about for this project. We're bringing in 3 million people, we can't even handle the parking people that are coming in now. There's three parcels of land on a waterfront, 30 degrees, I mean 30 acres there and 30 acres there and 39 acres on the Ports of Call. So my theory is that we should build a two-story parking structure for the entire area of the Ports of Call. And have the new structure, the project number one, from the Radkiviches on the top. And also that if you need the help to amend the state of California law regarding that we can't build hotels and buildings along the waterfront, where you want to put up the parking structures, you let me know and I'll help you do it.
Thank you so much. If I can, thank you so much sir. Thank you. Liz Johnson, followed by the last two speakers, Eric Johnson and Wayne Rakhovich.
Hi Joe.
Councilman Joe.
I'll be quick. I won't say anything special or how I'm intimately connected to the Johnsons or anything like that or how much I think highly of Mr. Rakhovich. I just want to say two things. One is that my understanding, and these are understandings I have from going to so many public meetings for so many years about redeveloping Ports of Call. And one of my main understandings is that the leases are up now. So this is the time to develop. You know, if new leases get signed or any, you know, you can't keep big companies like the Fish Market waiting for a lease. But they're going to need a lease. Something needs to be done. So this is the time, we have to seize the moment. So I want to put it out there as I know you are aware. And then I also want to take some issue with the distance, the thinking that the port has done in the study. And I think it bothered everybody that they looked at a 15-minute drive. Because Long Beach wouldn't do that. Long Beach is 49 square miles. San Pedro is 12 square miles. Let's look at 49 square miles at least to look at who is our audience here and let's get a more realistic feasibility study. get a more realistic feasibility study going. Finally, uh, I think that I was a little concerned when I heard the port, um, discussion about the amount that it's gonna take to do the infrastructure improvements. And I just hope that it can all be done for the $60 million that the port was suggesting earlier in this meeting, because it's possible that it might take a lot more than that. So, I hope that they're gonna talk freely about that.
Thanks, Liz.
Okay? Thank you.
Eric, um, Eric Johnson, followed by our last speaker, Wayne Rakovic.
Councilman Busciano, thank you for the opportunity to speak and, uh, address your committee today. I want to just point out a, a couple of issues associated with the report. I think it was an important step that needed to be taken by the port. By the very nature of these types of things, they tend to undershoot the actual mark. I think in many ways, it presents a conservative picture, but if you just take it at face value, the original phase of development is almost identical to what we had proposed. That may be all the market can bear today, but we don't think so. We think with a properly done development, that the full 375,000 square feet that were entitled under the IR can be built. And to the extent that happens, the financial results look substantially better than those modeled. But if you just take what's modeled at face value, just the RDNE enhancements will add $28 million of incremental revenue on that site. You have to dig in the report to page 164, and I was glad Mike added them up for y'all today, but that doesn't include the themed attraction component, which is $22 million. Add them together, that's $53 million of economic activity that can be made on the base case, or the, the target case in this instance, which is much less than the developer thinks is achievable. The other thing that the study hasn't addressed, and maybe the council office or the city or in conjunction with a developer we should, it doesn't include the quantification of the incremental tax revenue, property tax, sales tax, city business tax.
Right.
It talks about 500 jobs, but it doesn't include the multiplier effects, the add-on jobs, and the overall economic employment.
Property value increases.
Much less property value, which is a little trickier to estimate, but if you look at this as a project, not just for the port, but for the city of Los Angeles as a whole, the economic benefits are, are manifoldly increased from those modeled.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric, for everyone. Thank you. Wayne Rakovic. Thank you, Wayne, for being here and joining us.
Thank you for the opportunity. A, a comment about feasibility studies. I think in this case, uh, it's a very worthy effort. Feasibility studies, however, cannot take into account a number of things. They can't take into account good fortune. They can't take into account creativity, entrepreneurship, um, opportunities that can't be seen or expected. So, our job is to exceed what the model says. Our job is to bring in something better than, than the standard. And the standard is simply to look at other projects and compare this one to other projects. We want to do more than that. Uh, we have done more than that. Um, I, I keep thinking about some of our past projects. The Oviad Building in downtown Los Angeles, we had not one but two feasibility studies who told us to do food service in the building, but keep it very low. We didn't do that. We bought in the Rex Restaurant, which is the finest restaurant in Los Angeles for 17 years. The Wiltin', Wiltern Theater was about to be torn down. It had no future. Uh, it would, we had to recover, uh, equipment to, to put the theater back together. Now, 30-some years later, it is still functioning as a, as a live theater and doing very well. And just a couple of years ago, we purchased the Hughes Aircraft Company Buildings in Playa Vista. None of us had any idea that Google's YouTube division was gonna come along and lease one of the buildings, but they did. And as soon as they did, we exceeded all expectations and all projections that any of us could possibly make. So, human beings do make a difference, and, um, the enthusiasm and the commitment that's present in this community today is going to enable that, to, that difference to be realized. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. So, to, um, to close out this item, we must elevate the importance of San Pedro waterfront revitalization into L, into LA's leadership, from the mayor all the way down. Uh, it must be placed on par with the billion-dollar effort to revitalize the LA River. If the Port of LA commits to invest $61 million, as indicated in the report, for the waterfront promenade, the town square, and the Samson Way realignment, we can unlock and unleash an opportunity to create a world-class ocean waterfront that reinforces LA, um, as a world-class city. Frankly, the current state of our waterfront is an embarrassment compared to San Francisco, Seattle, Chicago, uh, New York, Miami. We can and must do better. Why can't we build 5,000 luxury apartments, condos, and townhomes within a 10-minute walk of our waterfront? We've seen how 20,000 units alone has transformed downtown Los Angeles over the past 15 years. Increasing density doesn't work in every neighborhood, but it can be embraced at the right location, and it can be embraced along the Pacific Ocean. Um, we want, we want to see density in 20-story residential buildings in downtown San Pedro that match the heights of the cranes found on the other side of the main channel. If the port commits to realigning Samson Way, it then provides an opportunity to build new townhomes and condos along Harbor Boulevard. Why can't we look at the building, new, uh, new housing adjacent to port-owned land in the marina? Why couldn't we cite a new 20,000 soccer stadium at the Outer Harbor? The site is comparable in size to the 15-acre footprint of the sports arena in Expedition Park, but what the sports arena doesn't have is the waterfront. What Los Angeles, downtown LA, you see cranes soaring high in downtown LA. What downtown LA doesn't have is a Pacific Ocean. But can the site compare to the views of the Pacific? As I said, Catalina Island, San Pedro Peninsula, and the Vincent Thomas Bridge. Does that site offer Brewery West and Crafted and the bars of great food offered, um, in downtown San Pedro? Could you imagine the impact of holding 20 soccer games and 20 concerts at a 20,000-seat stadium? Now, how many more five-star hotels could be built along the waterfront and along Harbor Boulevard? If Ports of Call's redeveloped, it can, it can, if we can build thousands of new housing units, and if we can convince the new LA Soccer Club to look at and build a new soccer stadium at the Outer Harbor, how could Metro deny us the opportunity to connect our world-class waterfront with the rest of the LA rail network? These aren't dreams, these are opportunities. We must look at accomplishing these goals step by step. I'd like to look at this feasibility study as a guide, as opinions, uh, for building out of the first phase of redeveloping Ports of Call. If, um, it doesn't call for a transformative project, but rather, it will be up to us and me as your leader, as your council member, to push for the real transfer, transformation of the waterfront. This can be an important step in the process, but it's nowhere near the plan that fully satisfy, satisfies me or the tremendous potential we have at our water's edge. With that, some direction I want to give to the city. Um, I'd like to get a report back. The port is part of the city family, and an undertaking such as redevelopment of the waterfront should not be done alone. The chief legislative analyst, as well as the Economic and Workforce Development Department and City Administrative Officer, are tremendous resources when it comes to negotiating and laying the groundwork to build transformative projects like Staples Center, LA Live, and the Grand Avenue. So, to begin, I want to request a CLA AVAC to work with port staff, as well as EWDD and city attorney, to report back with the following. One, a summary of the history of waterfront redevelopment efforts at the port, including previous studies and reports, master plans, along with previous RFPs and RFQs issued for waterfront redevelopment, as mentioned by one of our speakers, I think that was you, June. Look at all of these, uh, reports. Report about the Tidelands Trust restrictions and the city charter. Any recent legislation having to do with commercial, retail, residential redevelopment on tidelands and models of successful waterfront development in other big cities, especially San Francisco, Oakland, and San Diego. Provide recommendations on how the city can work together to capture the opportunities at the waterfront, to maximize economic benefits, construction, and permanent jobs, site-specific revenues and taxes that benefit the city of LA and the region, entire region. I want this report back in 30 days and like to schedule a special TCT meeting, uh, with the direction of, of Chairman Labange, Lisa, uh, to hear this report back, preferably before we go to, to winter recess. Lisa, can we do that? What's today? The 12th? So, December 12th. I'd also like to request that Harbor Department staff work with the Economic Workforce and Development Department, so that they may provide technical support during the discussions with the chosen developer, the LA Waterfront Alliance, and support for the future planning of the waterfront. With all due respect, this port of Los Angeles, the reason why it's America's port, because it does a great job of moving cargo. Um, what it lacks is the experience of moving people along our waterfronts in San Pedro and Wilmington. And that's why we're asking, uh, for some assistance from the Economic Workforce and Development Department to come in and help, um, negotiate and come up with terms moving forward. Um, AVAC, did you get all that? Just kidding. So, with that, thank you all. I'm gonna, um, the best interest of time, um, we are going to continue, um, item three, if we can, um, which is, um, the, um, economic impacts of all the, the, the festivals that occurred this last year. Cynthia, you've done amazing work, but just best interest of time, this went long. Let's continue item three and hold it in committee. With that, um, any other items? Michael?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And, uh, we close public comment with that. This, uh, meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.